So the webinar is now broadcasting to all attendees. I suppose the first order of business is to, you know, the roll call of those who are attending. And I should wait, I should wait until 7:30. So give me a minute. Such a slow minute.
Always is when you're waiting for it.
What is the expression, what does the expression a New York minute mean?
That's the time between the time that the light turns green and the car behind you honks its horn.
Okay, well, it is 7:30. And so as a preliminary matter, this is Jean McKnight, Planning Board Chair. And permit me to confirm that all members of the board and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So I believe everybody is present now that I expect to be present. And some people are here with audio at this moment, but I know they are here. So and when I call your name, members of the board, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative that you are present. So Martin Jacobs.
Here.
Ted Owens.
Here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
And IG McKnight, here. Now, the persons who are partici-- of the staff of the Planning Department, when I call your name, respond in the affirmative. Lee Newman.
Here.
The Director, here. Alexandra Clea.
I'm present.
And we also have with us Clay Hutchinson, Technical Support Administrator for the town. Now, we have persons with us who may, who may wish to speak on the agenda items as, as proposers. And, and the, the two persons here are, I will say your name and you say if you're present. And I'll give your relationship to Evans Huber, Council for LCB Senior Living.
I'm present.
And Simeon Brunner, who is a proponent of an agenda item on our agenda.
I am here, Madam Chairman, but I will sign off since my agenda item has been withdrawn. Does that make sense to you?
That, that is fine. We, as Chair, I see no need for you to continue to participate in the meeting. But I expect our initial item will not be terribly time consuming either. So if you wish to stay on, of course, that's your choice.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I have a narrative to recite for the members of the public who might be tuning in. Open Meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public, of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have a scheduled hearing, so will not feature public comment. For this meeting, this, the Needham Planning Board is convening by Zoom app as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. And for Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded. And some, some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, in fact, all attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. And all meeting materials, excuse me, all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. And that is true. At this point, we have put everything up that we intend to discuss tonight. So the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda, unless the Chair knows otherwise. In other words, unless we decide to change the order of items on our agenda. We are now turning to the first item of the, on the agenda. But before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I would introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speakers conclude their remarks, I, the Chair, will go down the line of members of the Planning Board inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. So please hold until your name is called, please. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. As Chair, I will keep mine unmuted. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And for any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. So those, some members of the public may be tuning in just by audio, and so they, they won't see who you are. So you must state, state your name. And finally, each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And since we are using this technology and technology can possibly fail, it is, has become customary to, to have a motion and then a vote to automatically continue this meeting to a date and time certain. And with this same Zoom ID number, if any technical difficulty arises. Lee, do we have a date and time certain to, to state in that motion?
We unmute it.
Lee, I didn't hear.
Sorry. It would be our first meeting in September, which I believe is September the 8th.
Okay. Okay.
7:30 PM.
At 7:30 PM. Do I have a, a motion for that automatic continuance?
Second.
Mr. Jacobs moves a second.
Alpert moves. All's a motion.
Oh, oh, Mr. Alpert moved and Mr. Jacobs seconded the motion. So I'll call the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the Chair is aye, so that's unanimous to have that automatic continuance if we should encounter such difficulties. Now, the, the first item on our agenda is the Planning Board's recommendation on the zoning articles for the October 2020 special town meeting. And there are two articles. One is the text of the zoning bylaw. And that, and that is designated Article One, and the other is to amend the map, the zoning map of the town, and that is Article Two. And we discussed both of these articles at a prior meeting. And did not, at that meeting, vote our recommendation because we wanted to make some changes to the wording of Article One. So we have before us an amended article, which has been circulated to members of the board. And I, I don't know if we want to, if there's a necessity for a presentation to go down each of the paragraphs that were changed. Would, would that be a good way to go forward with this? So in that case, what I'll do is referring to the redline version of Article One on Section 3, 3, on page two, Section 31531, there was simply a correction of a typo to make the word accessory capitalized in the list of permitted uses. On page three, subsection, at the top of the page, subsection D, under Special Permit Uses 31532, subsection D was reworded as follows. Buildings with multiple uses containing as a primary use, such uses as, and then the remainder is as it was, such uses as are allowed by special permit over right in the Avery Square Overlay District or the Avery Square Business District, as well as accessory uses. Supporting to customary incidental. So that is, if any, if anybody wants to chime in with, with an explanation of the reason for the change, feel free. And then primarily, we've got some changes to the following section on page three. Section 31541, on building height and related requirements. And that has to do with the fact that, under the, in the overlay district, the proposed zoning would allow a fourth story. There are limitations on the size of that fourth story. It is to be set back from the corners of the building. But they, the issue we wanted to deal with, with these amendments was if a different use is proposed for the building, that does not include the particular allowed uses that were, that, that are going to be allowed in this special overlay district. In other words, it does not include independent living apartments and/or assisted living and/or Alzheimer's memory loss facilities as the primary use, then the fourth story cannot be occupied without a special permit. And the thinking on this is that fourth story was particularly allowed so as to accommodate these uses in a, with, with a number of units that would make economic sense for the development of these uses, which we generally have felt are desired uses. But, you know, looking down the decades to come, we don't know what possible use this building could be used for in the future. So there is that concern about what the fourth story might be used for in the future. And then with regard to that special permit, allow or deny the, the use of the fourth story for the different use. If, if the special permit is not granted, the fourth story shall remain unoccupied for such use. But the fourth story and any associated mechanical equipment, and we know that there will be, you know, in any use of this building, there will be the elevator with the elevator shaft in any event, used at that level. It does not need to be demolished. And then the third section, so these are sections A, B, and C, small a, b, and c. Anticipating, I mean, it's possible the building could be demolished. One of the nice things about this development is it's a building used to be a mill that has been in this location that people want to see reused. I'm just adding my editorial comments here. This is not text. But if the building could be demolished, it could suffer fire or, or simply that a new use that makes sense for this site, that, but not in the existing building. If the primary use of that successor building is not these uses that we're encouraging and allowing, that is, the independent living apartments, the assisted living, the memory care units, then that new building shall not have a fourth story. So say, say, an office building goes in, that, that could not have a fourth story under this zoning. So, um, and then furthermore, the ability to use and occupy the fourth story when permitted by a special permit described above shall continue, notwithstanding a shift in the number of units. So it's okay. You know, if the number of units that ends up being approved by special permit is, say, you know, 72, I think, I think maybe that was what, what is proposed for the independent living. But suppose they decide later that they'd like to have less independent units and more assisted living units. So a shift of the units from one to the other, it, it does not affect the ability to use and occupy the fourth story. We did add that provided the shift itself or elimination of a use is allowed by such special permit or an amendment to that special permit. Okay, so that takes care of that lengthy change on page three.
Question, Jean.
Maybe I should stop there in case there is any question or comment.
I do have a question, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
On Section B, where it reads, "If the special permit described in subparagraph A above is not granted, the fourth story shall remain unoccupied for such use." So my question pertains to the words "for such use." Is the intent that the fourth story shall remain unoccupied for any use?
Well, if I could try to address that, the, the subparagraphs A, B, and C are intended, are contemplating a situation in which neither the independent living nor the assisted living nor the Alzheimer's memory loss units are in the building anymore. So we're now talking about some other use other than what's currently being contemplated and by LCB Senior Living, you know, a medical office building or something. Right. That's basically saying if for some reason, you know, LCB went out of business and the building had to be used for some other purpose, then, I mean, there are other issues, obviously, parking and that sort of thing. But if you wanted to go to a use that was, for example, allowed as a matter of right or allowed in the underlying ASB district, if you went with the underlying ASB district, then you wouldn't be entitled to have a fourth story. But the concern was that it wouldn't be economically viable to make the owner of the building tear the fourth story down. So they're just saying, you don't have to remove it, but it'll, but you can't use it for that other purpose. So without a special permit.
But let me respond also.
Let me just clarify my question.
Go ahead.
My question is, are you, is everybody amenable to, to changing the word "such" to "any"?
If I, if I could respond to that question and your subs, and your follow-up question about making a change, I think that the term "such use" is referring back to paragraph A, and that is a different use. With, with respect to the existing building, if a different use is proposed. And then B says that fourth story shall remain unoccupied for such use. And I do think what's referred back to is the different use.
Yes. If you leave it as such, does that open the door to maybe allowing it to be used for storage or something else? And is that, is that okay with us? So I, I'm trying to understand the intent first. My understanding, and, and I think Evans just confirmed it, which is, if you're going to use it for that different use, then you can't use the fourth floor, but you don't, don't have to demolish it, which is okay with me. But I just want to be clear that we're talking about, you can't use it, period, for any.
All right. Now, now I understand, Mr. Jacobs, the, the way in which you would tighten that wording.
Right. Well, I, I do have a concern about that because if you change the word "such," I mean, I recognize the concern that you're raising, Marty, but if you change the word "such" to "any" in subparagraph B, then I think that maybe solves one problem, but it creates another ambiguity. Because if it says, "shall remain unoccupied for any use," that sounds like, let's just say, for example, you were going to use it as a medical, trying to get permission to use it as a medical office building. And the Planning Board says, "We're not going to give you a special permit to use the fourth floor for the medical office building." Okay, it has to stay unoccupied. You can only use the bottom three floors, the first three floors. If this says, "The fourth story shall remain unoccupied for any use," that might imply what I think is not intended, which is that going forward, nobody can ever use the fourth floor for anything ever again, which I don't think is what you're, what the intent is.
Well. Oh, I disagree, Evans, because you can use it with, if you get a special permit.
Yes.
So if you're using it for a medical office building, and we don't grant the special permit, and you're going along for five years, and then you decide that you want to expand your medical office building, and you come back to the Planning Board and ask for a special permit, and maybe we'll grant it. So it's just a question of whether or not you have the special permit. If you don't have the special permit, you can't use it. If you have the special permit, then it will be subject to the terms of the special permit.
Special permit for what use, at what time?
For the, for the use that they're applying for the special. A special permit for.
Senior living use.
No.
No.
Senior living, no, it, it, we're talking about if it's not senior living.
Right.
They don't want to have that. And, but, but they want to use it for a medical office building. They want to use it for a regular office building. And they say, "Well, we'd like to have the, we'd like to use the fourth floor." They come to the Planning Board for a special permit. Planning Board says, "No." The whole idea of the fourth floor was for these housing for, for persons over the age of 55. I'm not going to say elderly. And, and so we don't grant a special permit. So they can't use the fourth floor. But they come back after a few years, or they then sell the building again, and there's another use. And they come back and they say, you know, "We'd really like to use the fourth floor, and it's not harming anybody, and nobody's complaining about the fourth floor." And the Planning Board at that time says, "Okay, you can have a special permit to use the fourth floor." It's just during the time when there's no special permit allowing it.
Yes, Mr., yes, Adam Block.
I have a couple of questions here. Perhaps for, for Evans and for Paul. The, the intent of the fourth, the intent of the language, is the intent of the language to allow the fourth floor only in a circumstance where it's used for a senior living use?
No, I would say the intent of the language is to allow the fourth floor only where it's used for one of these senior living uses, or in the future to allow the use of the fourth floor by special permit if that special permit is granted.
Yes, that was Mr. Evans Huber speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
And that is, and that is the, I think that is the correct answer.
Excuse me, if I may, I just follow up, Madam Chair.
Yes.
To, to Mr., to Evans. Evans, are you saying that provided that, that it's used for an underlying use in the, within the district?
So there's, so the, the Warren article lists various kinds of uses. There's, there's uses allowed as of right, which are listed in this Warren article, which are basically the uses that are allowed as of right in the underlying ASB district. And then there's uses that are allowed by special permit. So there are certain uses that could go in as of right. But, I mean, for, for example, I believe medical office building would be one of those. But not to use the fourth story unless we get a special permit for that use. Even though the use is allowed of right, as of right, the fourth story is not allowed as of right.
So you would subsequently come back to the Planning Board for a special permit for the use of the fourth floor for an underlying use in the district?
Correct. And the outcome would either be that the, that the Planning Board says, "Yes, you can have a special permit to use the fourth floor for this use," or, "No, you can't. We think it's an overuse," or whatever the reason might be. You can still use it for that underlying use, but you can't use the fourth floor.
Is that, does that clarify the purpose of this section, Adam Block?
Just, just one last time. So so in the event that, let's say, LCB is no longer in that business, and our special permit granted, if it were to be granted for this purpose, is no longer valid, and the owner wants to repurpose the building yet again for an underlying use, they may be able to use the fourth floor as part of the underlying use, provided it's approved as a special permit by the Planning Board.
Correct.
Excellent.
Yes.
And is there, is there any further comment from Town Council on this language? Are they, after we agree on this language tonight, now, will, is this going to be subject to a further review from Town Council?
No.
Go ahead, Lee, please. Lee Newman.
I think, I think the language here represents the final language for the warrant that satisfies all the parties.
Including Town Council?
And Town Council has raised issues which I think have been addressed, addressed here in this draft revision.
Yes. As we went along making these revisions, Town Council was consulted.
So, Madam Chairman, unless you want to allow further discussion, which is fine with me, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to move that we change the word "such" in B to "any." So that there's no question that it simply can't be used without a special permit.
That any use can't, Marty, you mean?
Correct. Any use. Because I could easily see somebody trying to use it for storage or something else. And if our intent is not to allow that, I think we should say that.
So that any use of the fourth floor requires a special permit by the Planning Board?
That's correct. That would be the impact.
If what Marty's saying requires a motion, and he just made the motion, I will second that.
All right. So we have a motion by Member Marty Jacobs to change the word in the second line of Section 31541, subjects in small b, from the word "such" to the word "any." So the phrase is "for any use." And we have a second to that motion. All right, I'll call for a vote.
Madam Chair, please have some discussion before.
Oh, certainly. I should have, I should have said discussion. I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Mr. Block.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just get clarity. I'd like to just get clarity because I think this just came up, and it may be unresolved with the applicant. So as you were as you were saying, Evans, that it sounds like we all agree, the applicant and the planning board, that any use of the fourth floor, for instance, for an underlying permitted as a right in the underlying district, or any use at all would require a special permit for the use of the fourth floor with this change from such to any. And is that your understanding as well now?
Well, I think we're all on the same page. This is Evans Huber speaking. I think we're all on the same page in terms of what the goal is and and what we're trying to achieve. And we don't disagree that there could be a circumstance under which you're trying to use the building not for assisted living or independent living or memory units, but some other use, one that's allowed, for example, by right in the underlying district. And there, you know, the first hurdle will be whether for that use, the fourth floor could be used for that use or not. And if the answer is no, then the intent of everybody, I think, in this meeting is that under that circumstance, the fourth floor is not going to be used. It's not going to be used for storage or any other purpose. My only concern with changing the word such to any is that I am a little concerned that it creates an ambiguity that I don't think anybody here is intending, which is that it would then read the fourth story shall remain unoccupied for any use, but doesn't have to be demolished. And the only ambiguity in my mind that that creates is does that mean it'll remain unoccupied for any use in perpetuity thereafter? That's that's my concern.
Well, we can, I mean, I get Paul, go ahead, but I wouldn't have any problem amending my motion to change the word to for any use without a special permit.
Well, I don't think we need to because we're forgetting about the fact that subsection B starts with the words. If the special permit described in subsection A above is not granted.
True, true.
Yes.
Already there. All we need to do is grant a special permit. They talk to us and say, we want to use the fourth floor for storage. Give us a special permit so we can use it for storage.
And if I, the chair may Jean McKnight may may comment. In my mind, I was thinking, oh, but what about the elevator shaft? And then I realized that the very first paragraph exempts the elevator shaft from these restrictions, so that would always be allowed to be on the fourth floor, as I think it is now, actually. So so with that, just after following that discussion, is there any further discussion of the motion?
Madam.
Just Ted.
Yes. Owens, yes, Ted Owens.
So following up on the comment that you made earlier, Gene, I'm wondering if the language would accomplish Marty's objection objective if instead of changing the such to any, you added after the word such, the word different, so that it read such different use and referred back to the phrase earlier. Does that?
I'll ask Mr. Jacobs if he thinks that satisfies his concern.
Good question, but I think not. And
Okay.
Because I think it would still leave open the possibility that somebody could try to use it for storage.
I agree with.
I don't think is our intent.
Okay.
Okay, well, if so, let's call at this point, she'll be called, Mr. Block, do you have a question or comment?
I do, I apologize, Madam Chair.
Oh, don't apologize.
I I believe that that Mr. Huber was answering a question, and in mid response, my screen froze and I lost connectivity to Zoom. So I wasn't sure what the resolution of and satisfaction was for his purpose. I apologize.
Well, I I believe this is Evans Huber again speaking. Can you hear me, Adam?
Yes, I can now. Thank you.
So, you know, I think we're all getting you know, concerned about, you know, very particular verbiage, and I'm certainly capable of being guilty of that as well. But in response to the concern that I raised, it sounded like Marty would be willing to to say shall remain unoccupied for any use and add, you know, except by special permit, just to clarify that in in the future, some other special permit use could revive the use of the fourth floor.
This is Mr. Jacobs. I you read me right, Evans? I think Paul is correct. I don't think it's necessary, but belt and suspenders, I would have no objection to that.
Well, it's redundant, but it does no harm. Would are you essentially amending your motion, Marty Jacobs?
I'm I'm happy to amend the motion, and I'll amend it this way. I move that we change the language of 3154.1b in the second line, instead of reading for such use, it should now read for such, oh, excuse me, for any use without a special permit.
My second holds for that also. That's Paul Alpert speaking on the second.
Okay, so the amended motion has been made by Mr. Jacobs and seconded by Mr. Alpert. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And Mr. Block.
Hi.
And the chair is aye, so that a further change to the text is approved unanimously. So I think at this point we can move on.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want to point out so that everybody so that all the board members know exactly what we're voting on that what 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 we're doing in this zoning amendment is basically making two substantial changes to the requirements of the underlying district. One is to allow the fourth floor and the increase in height. But the second change that we're making is to increase the floor to area ratio, the FAR. The underlying district has an FAR requirement of 0.75. This building is a preexisting nonconforming that I understand has a has an FAR of 1.0. And we are allowing an FAR in the in the overlay district of 1.1, slightly more than the current pre nonconforming. In 3.15.4.1, we are not changing the FAR if the use changes. We're changing the fourth floor, but the building will remain to have an FAR. And even if they demolish it and put in a new building, it will, if it's within the overlay district requirements, it will still have the it will still have the 1.1 FAR rather than the 0.75 FAR. I've got no problem with that. I just want to make sure that the other board members understood that we are not requiring if they change the use away from assisted living or independent living, we're not requiring them to reduce the FAR. It will remain at 1.1.
I would. Am I allowed to speak now or not?
Mr. Huber, yes, did you have a comment in response to Mr. Alpert's comment?
Yes, I was only going to say that going forward, if the building is used for some other use other than independent living or assisted living or Alzheimer's memory loss, yes, technically, the 1.1 FAR will still be allowed, but there won't be any as we've just gone through, there won't be any other use allowed that would that would implicate the 1.1 FAR unless it includes the fourth floor, which could only happen by special permit.
Six of one, half a dozen of the other. It's all going to come out and wash.
But I I felt there should be on the record that that.
Okay.
That it's not an oversight, that this paragraph does not address FAR.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, I think that was helpful to have that. So page page four is just really at the top paragraph to delete the word existing, the total floor area of any fourth floor addition to the building, maybe may not exceed 35% of the total roof area of the building. Because it it's possible there would be a special permit that that so it's not necessarily the existing building we're talking about. Could be a possibility of a different building. And it could be a possibility of an of a special permit to allow the fourth floor to be used, but still the may not exceed 35% is the concept here as I understand it. Mr. Alpert, you were involved in these amendments. Do you think I'm correct about the removal of the word existing?
Yes.
Paragraph, yes, all right. And then in the next section on page four, 3.15.4.2, acting town council made the recommendation to remove the words such as are feeling that those words added a broadness that we didn't want to have. So we agreed and deleted those words set such as are contained in the last line of that section. Then we'll be going to page five on the sections having to do with affordable housing. Let's see. I can go on with this unless, Lee, you did you want to present this section, or I can do it?
Or I can do it, sorry, I got I got kicked, I've got booted out of Zoom for a few minutes. I'm assuming that the only motion to amend was the one that we made regarding the phrase for such use. Is that correct?
Yes, that is. And did you get the wording of that? It's because it was a second amendment.
Yes, I I got that. So this the revisions to this section were were done to address the fact that there is a provision in the zoning that allows for a reduction below the 12 and a half percent if some of the units are made available to people who are earning at 50% of area median.
Somebody's phone. Like you, Mr. Kramer?
So I guess I'm here.
Okay.
I was I was hoping we were going to wrap this up before Roy could join.
Well, Mr., let me introduce for anybody of the public who might be listening in the person who just joined as a participant, and that is attorney Rory Kramer, counsel for LCB Senior Living. Okay, so we're just going through the final amendments before we vote the recommendation. And we're on page five, and planning director Lee Newman was explaining the reasons for the change in the affordable housing section of the zoning amendment.
Uh, yeah, so the reason this this was making a reference, I think, to section 13 of the bylaw, which was in the definition section, and it did not recognize the fact that in this provision of the zoning where we're allowing for affordable units, we do have a provision that allows for the percentage to be reduced where the units are provided to people who have lower incomes at 50% of area median income. So the reference as modified by this section was it was introduced in order to allow for the provision of a reduction in in the number of affordable units in the event the applicant chooses to provide them to folks at a lower at a lower income. And then the paragraph ordering was changed. I just felt that it seemed more appropriate to start out with the standard of 12 and a half percent as being the standard of the affordable unit at the base level.
So it's really to move the paragraphs around for for clarification of reading, and then to make the special reference for the units at or below 50% of area median income. So are there other questions or comments from the board members on that change? Okay, so we'll move on from that. I'm not asking for votes on every single change because we'll we'll decide at the very end. Okay, so that's it. That's it on the article. Perhaps we'll concern us as with the article and adopt it, and then separately deal with a couple of changes to the article explanation. So as far as the, I think it makes sense to have separate votes, one that accepts these changes to the to the wording of the article one, then another that accepts the changes to the wording of the explanation. And then finally, our recommendation to town meeting. So at this point, I'll ask for a motion to to approve the changes of the text of article one with the amendment to the proposed changes that was approved just just recently at this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Jacobs moved, and was it Mr. Block was seconded?
Mr. Albert.
There you are up there. You're changing your location. Right. And Mr. Albert, that seems to be the pattern, Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Albert was seconded, or we'll stick with it. I won't get confused. All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
And Mr. Owens. And the chair is aye, so we have approved this wording of the article. So moving on to the explanation that we'll be putting before town meeting in the warrant. We, at the bottom of what's page eight of of this document, we added an explanation with regard to the what we had have just been discussing. If the primary use of the existing building ceases to be independent living apartments, then the fourth story cannot continue to be occupied unless a special permit is granted, allowing such continued occupancy. But the fourth story need not be demolished, and if the existing building is demolished and the primary uses are not independent living apartments and or assisted living and or outcomes, then the new building cannot have a fourth story. So that is the only change to the explanation. So do we have a motion?
Excuse me, Ms. Chairman, there was one additional change, I think, that we actually in the second paragraph.
Oh, excuse me, let's see. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I missed that. Yeah, at the in the second paragraph of the article explanation, I'll read how as it is worded as changed. The proposed bylaw amendments will allow the empty Carter Mill Building to be renovated to create a senior housing community. Oh, let me mention the reason for this. It was pointed out that we were saying in the explanation that it would be a certain number of units. And that really isn't established by this zoning. The certain number of units would be established by the special permit. A certain number of units would be established by the special permit. So in this explanation, we just changed it to say, renovated to create a senior housing community perempt. 135 units are proposed. And including age restricted independent living apartments perempt, 72 units are proposed. Then assisted living apartments, 55 units, and memory care units, 28 units. So it's understood that these are simply proposed units. So that's that change.
Do you want to add the word proposed to the, when you, when you gave the number of 55 and 28, do you want to add the word proposed in those?
You know, I suppose to be careful, we should. I was just like saying, oh, we already said proposed. They know it's proposed. But let's, all right, is that a motion to add the words proposed after 55 and after 28?
Oh, it was from Mr. Kramer, so I don't think he can.
Is Roy a member of the board now?
Okay. 55 units proposed. All right, I'm, see, that's what we have to say, the person who makes the motion. I mean, who, who speaks, so we all know. All right, so Mr. Kramer for the, for the applicant has suggested a further clarification. Is there a motion to adopt that clarification of adding the words proposed in two more places?
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Okay, did we have the?
Marty moved, I'll, I'll for a second. We're going to make the minute very easy for tonight.
Party motion, Paul Albert second. All right, is there any discussion? Well, of that, well, let's talk about that change and then we'll go to the whole thing. Any discussion of that change? All right, then call for a vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Albert?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
And the chair is eye, so we made that change to the text. All right, so now do I have a motion to adopt the, the two major changes to the text on pages seven and eight that have been discussed?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Jacobs moves, Mr. Albert second. Any further discussion of these changes? All right, then we'll have a vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Albert?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
And the chair is eye, so we have adopted these changes to the explanation. So at this point, we have the text of the bylaw. There were no changes proposed to the text of the motion to, to change the zoning map to create the overlay district. So we, but, but in, in making our recommendation, of course, we want to refer to both Article One and Article Two and what our recommendation to the town meeting will be.
I move. Yeah, all right. I move that we recommend adoption of Article One with the changes voted tonight and Article Two unchanged from prior drafts to the Board of Selectmen.
I think that's all I need to say. Am I right? I think we're making the recommendation to town meeting.
Yes. Our meeting, excuse me, excuse me.
So we recommend adoption of Article One with the changes voted tonight and Article Two as.
Unchanged.
Unchanged, right. And that's, and to recommend to town, to town meeting, to town meeting. All right, so that's the motion. Move that we recommend to town meeting, adoption of Article One with the changes voted tonight and Article Two unchanged. And there's a second by Mr. Albert. Is there a further discussion of this recommendation? All right, then we'll have a vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Albert?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
And the chair is eye, so we have our zoning articles and our recommendation finalized for the fall special town meeting. Very good. Is there any further discussion on this, in this warrant article? Yeah, warrant.
I, I had one question.
No, agenda article. Yes, Mr. Kramer.
The, the understanding is that the planning board will be the sponsor. This is not a citizen's petition. Do you need to take another vote about being the sponsor or is that just understood?
That's already been done. The referral that was originally done to the selectmen, the planning board was the sponsor of the article.
Oh, okay.
The article was sent to the, from the planning board to the Board of Selectmen, so that was done months ago.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. So that, then we are all set with this agenda item. Thank you for your participation, Mr. Huber, Mr. Kramer. And I think now we're ready to move on to our other agenda item for this meeting, and that is the A&R Plan for 7770 Chestnut Street LLC petitioner, the property located at 770 Chestnut Street. And Planning Director Lee Newman, would you like to speak to this? Because we did receive a communication from the proponent.
Yes, I received an email communication from the proponent who indicated to me that their intention is to withdraw this application. I don't have a formal letter which, which indicates that, but in the email, they indicated that they would provide the formal written letter tomorrow, which would be the letter that I would submit to the town clerk along with the planning board's vote on this matter to allow this to be withdrawn. I think without prejudice is what they're looking for. So I think what's appropriate in this, at this case is to prevent us from having to meet again in the event that there's, that there's a problem with our getting that request for a withdrawal, that the vote ought to be to maybe accept the applicant's request to withdraw the application without prejudice, provided the, the written request is received. And in the event that it's not, to so, to notify the town clerk that the A&R endorsement has been denied because the planning board otherwise finds this to require approval under the subdivision control law.
Be happy to turn that into a motion. So moved. I would, I would just note that Mr. Brunner was on this call earlier, dropped off, and he confirmed that there will be a request to withdraw coming. But you have my motion.
My, my, my only question is whether we need to have a date certain by which you need to receive the letter as part of the motion. Don't receive the letter by?
Maybe by the end of next week is reasonable.
Which would be September, September 4th.
I'm happy to include that as a friendly amendment.
Second.
Um, it just, okay, that, I, there has been a motion by Mr. Jacobs and a second by Mr. Albert. And long, as, as worded by our planning director with the addition of a date certain for the receipt of the letter of September 4th. Is there, is there some, any discussion on that motion? On Mr. Block?
Excuse me, I, I, it might be, it might be actually advisable to move it back a little just because Alex and I are not going to the office regularly and we need to actually formally record this with the, with the town clerk. And we've got a holiday coming up, so maybe it's more appropriate to maybe make it the second of September, which gives us some time at the end of the week to take care of things in the event we don't have this withdrawal.
Okay, so do you accept the amendment to September 2nd?
I do.
Okay. Okay, so that, is there further discussion? Yes, Mr. Block?
What was the purp, what was the purpose of the application and what's the purpose of the withdrawal?
The purpose of the app, the purpose of the application was to divide an existing lot in fronts on the private way, which is being redeveloped as Heather Lane in, into two lots. The A&R plan showed the frontage for those lots is coming off of a proposed Heather Lane. Well, Heather Lane has not been created yet. We've just basically approved that, the decision was recorded with the clerk today. It needs to be recorded at the registry. That has not happened, so it's not timely. Secondly, the street hasn't been constructed, so the upgraded access has not been provided yet.
So is, so is the only time when, not the only time, but would the applicant then theoretically resubmit after A, the, the decision is recorded? Or B, after the road has been constructed?
I think the, the applicant would resubmit after the road is, is constructed to the point of being at a binder course and the utilities are in, and the remainder of the work and the subdivision has been bonded to assure its completion.
And that's what we discussed at our last meeting. So now this applicant is basically too ahead of the game.
Yes, as I recall, that is what, what we discussed at our last meeting. And I think otherwise, we're really talking about what sometimes referred to as a paper street, one that doesn't exist on the ground, but only on paper. So I only have, Mr. Albert?
Yeah, I think as a further explanation for, for Adam's question, the proponent might take the position that once the plan is recorded, even though the street has not been, been constructed and the binding completed, that with the recording of the plan, their application would be timely. We would, we would then have to have a discuss, if so, so if they brought the A&R plan back after the recording of the plan, but before the construction of the road, we would have to have that discussion. But that's, that's a possibility. I, I think, I think that that's a question that the law might not be settled on at the present time.
Okay, but we don't need to cross that bridge until we come to it and we'll see when the withdrawn A&R plan is resubmitted to us where we are in the process for Heather Lane. Now, as far as continuing the discussion of the motion, I have a question. I'm wondering why we don't set, this coming Friday is the day for receipt of the letter. Could you explain, Lee, why moving it up to this coming Friday? I know it's only two days, but they said they'd have it tomorrow.
I don't, I won't have an original tomorrow. I'll just have a, I'll have an email copy.
So you think you need until Tuesday to actually have this accomplished? All right, but I'm content.
Have the original received, yes.
No, I mean, excuse me, Wednesday actually is the second of September. Okay, all right, so we have the motion. We have the second. Any further discussion? All right, so now a vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Albert?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
And the chair is eye, so that motion is adopted unanimously with approving withdrawal of the A&R application on, on the condition that was recited. So I think we've dealt with our agenda. I know when distributed to us were materials, and I should have mentioned these when we were talking about the Carter Mill, but we do have materials in our packet that were provided by the proponent of the Carter Mill rezoning to the finance committee. And I don't know if there's any discussion called for on, on that, but we have it anyway. All right, then, if there's no other business, is there a report or anything else, Lee, that you want to?
No, I have nothing, I have nothing to add.
All right, Mr. Block, did you have something you want to?
Yes, you, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. If we're sponsoring this at a town meeting, what's the process for coordinating with the, with FinCom, who I think tonight was, just received the, you know, the proponents' proposal? Do we, what's the process for coordinating or communicating rather with, with FinCom to determine, to also know what their support level is?
Well, generally, they contact us and we're invited to one of their meetings to, to do a presentation on the article and answer their questions, and then they vote their recommendation after that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
And they remind me, Lee, of the date of the town meeting. It's early October, correct?
October the 8th.
October the 8th. All right. So if there is nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Could I, excuse me, this is Alex.
We don't yet have a second, so let's wait on that. All right, Alex, go ahead.
I'm just looking at my calendar. Unless I have it wrong, I just wanted to correct that town meeting is actually on Sunday, October 4th. Does that sound right to people on a Sunday?
That's right.
You are right, Alex.
For Sunday, October 4th. I just wanted to clarify and correct.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I forgot it was changed.
Yeah, that's very unusual, but I think the, the explanation I'm imagining is that the, the town still feels it's necessary for everyone to be safe that we have an outdoor town meeting. And, and they feel it would be, be a better town meeting to be in person outdoors than to be a Zoom town meeting. So that's what we're doing.
So the article will go on the warrant in the form that has been voted tonight.
And I imagine the presentation format will be similar to what was used at the annual town meeting. As I recall, I, I did the presenting and I pre-recorded a presentation and did not make a presentation at the town meeting. Or was it shown? I, you know, I forget.
No, you're, you're correct, Jean. You, you, you recorded it and it was on the, it was on the town's website. All the presentations were on the town's website for about a week or two prior to town meeting.
Right, right.
And nothing, and nothing was shown at the time of the town meeting itself.
Correct.
Questions were responded to, of course, but the, no, no, no presentation was made. And also, handout was avail, I think a handout was available with the same essential text as the presentation. Okay, well, I guess we, we have that to look forward to again. Now, we, we, we do need to decide who will do this presentation this time. It doesn't need to be me, of course. Is, should we decide that now or wait till our September 8th meeting?
I think September 8th is plenty of time. It's only a couple of weeks away.
Okay. All right, then, so there was a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yes, there is. You have it from me.
All right, so Mr. Albert moved, Mr. Jacobs seconded that we adjourn the vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Albert?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
And Mr. Owens?
Hi.
And the chair is eye, so we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.